Clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Stefanski.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Frankie.
Roat.
Here.
Ryan present.
We have a quorum, please rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Stefanski.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We will move on to item D in our agendas, public hearings. We have three this evening, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Ordinance to create a pedestrian mall in the 1300 block of South 72nd Street.
Mr. Scher.
Thanks, Mayor. This first hearing item, we'll hear the ordinance that's before you, which is item, the public hearing item, and as well as item 35 on the Public Works Agenda. There's a related item, a resolution, item number 38, that'll also just briefly summarize here within this presentation. So what's before us is the pedestrian mall ordinance to close a portion of 72nd Street, just north of Greenfield Avenue. And there is a, the basis for this is within our state statutes, the cities can buy ordinance and via public hearing can legally create a pedestrian mall which would close a street to vehicles, motor vehicles in this case, while maintaining it legally as a piece of right-of-way. So it's different from the vacation or discontinuance process where it becomes private property and taxable. In this case, the portion of right-of-way that we're talking about here, in this case 72nd, would remain public right-of-way and under city control. So the location is specifically north of Greenfield Avenue, about a 60 by 120 part portion of land, being on the grid in West Dallas, Greenfield Avenue being the major, you know, thoroughfare through the downtown West Dallas area, and there's north-south side streets, as we all know. This part would be north of, north of Greenfield Avenue. Alley access and sidewalk access along Greenfield Avenue, as well as alley access behind the storefronts, would remain open and accessible. It's just the portion between what is the future DECO and the mixed-use building that would be, would be closed to vehicle, motor vehicle traffic. In terms of looking forward, envisioning for the downtown, you know, downtown's no stranger to closing streets. It's done on a very, you know, limited basis now with certain events like à la carte and the car show as part of our downtown area. But also in taking a look at the amount of, you know, streets we have throughout the city, there's roughly about 25%, actually a little bit, little over 20% of land within the, within the city, street right-of-way is about, is considered a street right-of-way. And while it's important to have access and certainly move around town, we also should be taking a look at reimaging, you know, how we want to reimage the downtown and create destinations within our city. One way to do this is taking a look at infrastructure and being on a grid, are all streets necessary for vehicle traffic? Arguably not, but, so we're, we're looking at this as, as a way to sort of reposition our downtown and to sort of further the downtown as a destination area, a destination place to spend a little more time and, and money. And it could also be used by the bid, as well as businesses within the downtown area. So the DECO has expressed an interest in this portion of, of street, and they were before the, the Common Council back in May, they received a conditional use for their event space. And then later in October, we had put out some social media blast, door hangers throughout the neighborhood, and, and then in November, we had scheduled the public hearing, a public informational meeting, where, where we invited residents to City Hall here to sort of talk about the idea or the concept of closing a portion of 72nd Street. There was a Class 1 notice put out, and then in Plan Commission on earlier this month, they had recommended approval of the concept of, of the ordinance, and they had reviewed the, the basics of the, of the resolution as well, and they had recommended approval. So tonight, what's before us is the ordinance, public hearing, and then some consideration for that resolution, which creates the agreement between the DECO, in this case, and the city for the use of that, of that portion of 72nd Street. This is just a view out of, out of the DECO window towards that part of 72nd Street down below. And then in terms of feedback, overall, we've received positive support. There has been some caution exercised by, you know, some, within that feedback and by the bid. The bid is supportive of the DECO, however, they're taking a little bit more of a wait-and-see approach, as indicated in their communication. I'm going to jump ahead now, just for a quick summary of the resolution, which is also on the agenda, and this is a privilege agreement, which could be approved by the Council via resolution. The DECO proposes to use this portion of 72nd Street right-of-way between the months of, of May 1st and October 31st. In exchange, they'd be willing to pay for the improvements within that part of city right-of-way. This is just an artist or architect's rendering of what that could look like, with patio chairs and tables. Certainly, within this first six months of time, you wouldn't create permanent closures of, of the street. This would be more of a temporary barriers to make it safe, to make sure a car doesn't accidentally turn down the street from the alley or from the street of Greenfield Avenue. Landscaping could certainly be added in the future. What, what could happen, though, within that initial six-month term is to put out tables and chairs and create a place for people, for music and other, other festivities, both associated not only with the DECO, for some exclusive nights, but also for the bid and the city to use as well, should there want, should there be small-scale acoustic events or other city-sponsored events within this area. And just go quickly through the, so the resolution with the agreement does go through these lists of things in more detail. This is just a summary of those highlights. Again, the term being May 1st of 2023 through October 31st, a six-month period. The improvements would be paid for by Walter Holtz of the DECO. It would be maintained by the DECO. Safety barriers would be installed. The, Mr. Holtz would need to apply for a licensed extension of premise to serve alcohol within the pedestrian mall area, and that could be reviewed under, under the authority of the License and Health Committee. And then the use of the, of the pedestrian mall would be, would require a special, special event permit, and then permit, private events or somewhat exclusive events could be conducted by the DECO, and then the, the events would be on Fridays and Saturdays between 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Additionally, when, when the DECO is not using the area for pedestrian mall, it could be used by the general public, for instance, someone coming over from another nearby restaurant, sitting down and eating a sandwich, or it could be used by the city for sponsored events or the Downtown Business Improvement District. And at any time, the Common Council could terminate the, the agreement and basically eliminate the, the pedestrian mall. And then there will be insurance that would be, Mr. Holtz would take, would, would secure for this area. Like any privilege, it can be, it can be taken away, and with any privilege that the city authorizes, there's also a certificate and insurance requirement as part of that grant of privilege. So that would be obtained by the applicant. So in conclusion, the Plan Commission has recommended approval, and the two items on tonight's council agenda, one being the public hearing for the ordinance. And one thing to note is that if, should council want to proceed with the ordinance to create the pedestrian mall, when would you like to close the street? Do you want it effective immediately? Or maybe something like next spring in April to close it? Just something to consider. And then secondly, the resolution, the more specific terms of the resolution are in item number 38 of, of tonight's agenda. One other item, just to note, within, perhaps within the agreement, it's not covered within the agreement, would be on the west side of 72nd Street, within the proposed pedestrian mall, there's a sidewalk alongside the mixed-use building. There's a doctor's office on the ground floor and apartments above. One idea could be to keep this sidewalk open, so that, in other words, if there is an exclusive event going on on a Friday or Saturday night by the DECO, that this sidewalk here, that runs north-south along the west side of the, that area, the street, could be kept open for public, for instance, to park behind the building and then walk out to Greenfield Avenue, just as an accessibility measure. Thank you. That concludes my pedestrian mall presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any questions from the members of the Common Council on our first public hearing?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
So I'm just going to hit the highlights, and then I have a question and some comments. So the highlights are, this is six months only, and it starts in May and ends at Halloween. It's, it's essentially for the private use only on Fridays and Saturdays, the rest of the time, and it ends at 10:00 PM. And it, the rest of the time, it's essentially free and open to the public. We'll compare it to a park, okay, so people could come there and hang out and have a sandwich. My question is on the cancellation of it. It's not like we need to give him 30 days. We just need to convene a meeting of the council? The entire council has to vote on it?
Correct. It would require council's decision, you know, be, could, Public Works Committee could bring it up, or a member of DPW or engineer, any city employee, or any elder person could bring this before the council for action.
Okay. And then, and then my comments. Some of the resistance to this is, well, it's going to be a public space, it's going to be problems. I've spoken to the owners and the operators at Cagle's and Station 6 both. Not only are they both highly supportive of this, because they have what would be the closest parallel spaces to this, you know, kind of a spot that's open to the pub, you know, you can walk in. Station 6 has that big service area, and Cagle's obviously has that discontinued street that they own now. Not only were both of them overwhelmingly supportive of this, but they also said that they had essentially zero problems with their spaces. You know, people wonder, well, 3:00 AM, somebody's going to wander in there and do something. So I just wanted to convey that to the council, because I, like I said, I talked to them. So I appreciate Mr. Holtz and what he's doing, and staff support for this, and the idea that we're easing into this. This is not 100%. If it works, it works, and it can be renewed or changed in the future as we see fit, or maybe it doesn't work, and it either ends at six months or even earlier if needed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Any other questions from the Common Council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments on this public hearing from the members of the audience? Please come up to the microphone and podium. And if you push the button with the little person on it, it'll turn green, and that will activate your microphone. And please give us your name and address for our official record.
Okay, my, my name is Dominic Ambroselli. I happen to be the owner of the building at 7200 West Greenfield, or 1372 South 72nd Street. And one of my concerns that was passed on by one of my tenants, I do have a tenant whose direct access is right on 72nd Street, and their concern, it's a Door Healthcare, if I can speak on their behalf, their concern is that if this is closed off, they have a lot of people, a lot of their, their clients, that many of them are handicapped, whatever, and, and they would lose the ability to have direct access to their office space. And, you know, that is a concern of mine too. Obviously, if, if they're not happy, I'm not happy, you know, in a sense. So again, it's, it's the loss of that access. We have, we have offices with entrances right on 72nd Street, and if that's closed off, obviously, it's, it can be difficult for the people to enter their office space.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll, we'll touch base with you after the public hearings, if you're still around, and talk it through a bit. Thank you. Anybody else from the audience with questions, comments on public hearing number one? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number one. And I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
Resolution for a conditional use permit for multifamily apartments, proposed five-plus unit dwelling to be located at 8530-56 West National Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this is a proposed multifamily apartment building on the site of the Clark Oil Building, known as Clark Oil Building, to me at least, at 85th and National. This would be on the north side of National Avenue, between 84th and then the next major street west is 92nd Street. Some, couple renderings on the right-hand side of the proposed look. It's roughly about six floors in height. The property is owned C2, which is a neighborhood commercial. Conditional use is required for apartment buildings within this commercial zoning district. In terms of the proposed 247-unit apartment facility, the construction is slated to begin in 2023, in the spring or summer, and it's about a 16 to 18-month construction window. So it will be opening in 2025. This is the general location from the bird's-eye view, and then some, with, with respect to context of what's around it, the intersection of 84th and National is in the lower right-hand side. The Union Pacific Railway runs east and west to the north of this project, and then the subject property here, highlighted in yellow or gold. The Honey Creek Park is located immediately south across the street, underneath the water tower, as well as our historical society, Luck Schoolhouse property. And then to the west, as you look to the west down National Avenue, you can see some other developments, a lot of rooftops, as well as the Sunrise Apartments, which is comparable, somewhat comparable in height, it's six floors. And in terms of the planning context, the proposed development does, does hit a number of the marks in terms of our National Avenue corridor study, as well as our comprehensive plan, in terms of redeveloping the area for some additional housing and additional activity along National Avenue. So the development, as seen here in the image, is six floors in height, the ground floor being a parking structure, and then there'd be five residential floors above that. There are 319 parking spaces, both within and outside of the building. And then also the unit mix, this is generally described or summarized here. There's different, more specific types of one-bedroom units. There's also some studios, but that gives you the initial flavor of what, what you can, what you can anticipate in terms of the unit mix, primarily being one-bedroom units, and then 73 two-bedrooms, and then, and so on. This is a market rate development, and just another image from, looking from National Avenue. This is a, a view of the lower level, or actually the ground, ground floor level with 189 parking stalls. And there's also, I guess, different amenities within this area, including, you know, within that ground floor level, a fitness center, the lobby, office space, the, a pet spa, and a wash station within the parking structure. And then down below that, accessible from National Avenue, is a lower level of parking. And given the grade of, of the site, there is this ground floor level of parking, which is accessible here, off of National Avenue, into the garage here. And, and then further east, there's another access point to a lower-level garage on the east side, which has 106 structured parking spaces. And then just in terms of the, the floor plan layout, the building is somewhat S-shaped, sideways S or two, I guess, but you can kind of see how it curves, and the corridor spaces within are in the darker gold color. The rooms are in the lighter gold color. And then moving up from, from the second floor to floors three through six, you have just sort of a similar layout. The, the overall floor area, the unit sizes range in nature from about 450 square feet up to about 1,200, a little over 1,200 square feet. And the estimated value is, is roughly about $48 million, and that's considered a taxable value. The overall building, all floors, is about 140,000 square feet. It has a 10-foot setback from National Avenue. The main entrance points to the building are centrally located, in the middle of this building here in blue, and then as discussed briefly before, with access points to a parking garage on the east end, and then to surface parking, as well as under additional ground floor parking from National Avenue at these two points here. The Union Pacific Railway is just, just to the north here. And then there will be a landscaping, plentiful landscaping around the site, a number of trees, as well as lower-growing shrubs and so on, for green, a green softened look for the overall property. And then moving into the architectural plan, just a view, a rendered bird's-eye view from looking east in the National Avenue. And the overall height is going to be about 68 feet, and the, the site, in terms of context, I mean, it's, it's similar in nature to the nearby Sunrise Apartments. We've got a water tower across the street, which is somewhere around 90 feet tall. So it's, it's not out of place, at least from planning's perspective, along National Avenue corridor. The exterior materials will be quality materials, including masonry, modular brick, fiber cement panels. There will be accent panels as well, the gold panels that you see. Considerable amount of windows, and in terms of articulation, the building will feature balconies, and does have, just given the, the floor plan views that I showed before, has a number of ins and outs. It's not just one big rectangle plopped on a site. So it, it will be architecturally interesting to look at, we believe, and will add a nice appearance to the, to the street frontage. Just some side views. This view, by the way, on the top is what you would see from National Avenue. And then down below, these are side elevations. If you're traveling westbound on National Avenue, this is what you would see here, the side being National Avenue, and it's the east side, and then the west side. If you're heading east on National, this is what you would see. We talked a little bit about parking, but the ratio in terms of comparability to other projects, for instance, the Mandel Project around our farmer's market, or Ogden, is about 1.3 parking stalls per unit, which is comparable to, to others that we've approved previously. And it will feature indoor bike, bike parking stalls, as well as some outdoor spaces. So it does meet the, the benchmark there in terms of our, of our ordinance requirements. And then amenities will include a pool. There's actually two, I guess, yard areas, if you want to consider this, you know, National Avenue would be in the bottom here. This being somewhat of a, a front yard area, and then a backyard area, which would be insulated from traffic on National Avenue, and just be more inward-facing. But the front yard area would feature a pool on that deck, and then, as well as some other areas for common area, recreation. And the backyard area would feature grill stations, fire pits, outdoor games, a small dog run. So things that are marketable, things that people want when they're looking for a place to live. So the Plan Commission has recommended approval. We've received no objections to date. I know there have been some concerns about, I've heard some concerns about maybe parking or tra, I mean, I'm sorry, traffic. And there was a traffic study done, and our engineering department did not, you know, I guess, submit any significant concern at all whatsoever. In fact, there was a prior proposal about a year ago where a traffic study was done as well, and this plan has adopted some of those measures that were encouraged at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the members of the council?
Mayor Devine.
That was a tie. We're giving Suzette.
Ladies first.
Alderperson Grisham.
Thank you. Steve, thank you for the presentation, and also reiterating the fact that Alderwoman Keen and I did ask for that traffic study, and I think we're in a good position with it. As much as I'm supportive of the project, and I still am, I just wanted to make more of a statement. As we're looking at these new developments, I wouldn't have been able to tell this development apart from Mandel's in, in a lot of ways. And I guess what I'm looking more for is that we keep in line and in mind of the history of the city as well, especially in this historic area of the city, that I wouldn't necessarily like to see all of these projects looking the same. And, and that's just one of the, the things that I have concern with, and that some of the constituents, when they are reaching out, or at least having conversations, are saying, okay, we're, we're moving away from, you know, the small-town feeling, going all, you know, development, which of course, I know otherwise. But I just wanted to at least mention that I think it looks way too familiar to the other projects that are going on, and I would just like to see a little bit more unique features to these properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Roat.
Thank you, Mayor. This would be for the owners group. I was at the Plan Commission meeting a month ago, and I asked about workforce housing. And I know it is marketplace, I, I see that. But then one of the gentlemen along the windows on the west wall said it's already built in, the workforce housing aspect. Can you explain that again? And whoever it was that told that to me? Oh yeah, there's the guy. I was just joking, but go ahead, sir.
Good evening. I'm David Lyon with Three Leaf Partners. And yes, sir, we, we talked about the workforce housing as it relates to the income, incomes of the households that we could potentially serve. And the gentleman that joined me, my colleague John Peckin, added some detail to the conversation. But generally speaking, the current rent structure that we're proposing, about 25% of the apartment units, will be affordable to people earning 80% or less of area median income. So that's how we're defining, in this case, AMI. Now, there is the opportunity for incomes to grow, for the rents to go up, but out of the gate, as structured, our rents will provide about 25% affordability. Does that answer your question, sir? Okay, sure, sure.
Thank you. Any other questions from the members of the council? Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close our second public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read out public hearing three.
Resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed special assessments for improvement of West National Avenue from South 62nd Street to South 65th Street.
Thank you. Mr. Hutter.
Hi, I'm Rob Hutter. I'm the interim city engineer here for the city of West Dallas. And our public hearing tonight is on National Avenue from South 62nd Street to South 65th Street. This will be a complete reconstruction, new storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water main, and concrete road. The procedures for this public hearing, as outlined here, we go through this project scope, the assessment rates, get comments or questions, and then the public hearing will be closed, and Public Works Committee will vote on it. The final decision is by the full Common Council. National Avenue in this area is in very rough shape. Just a few pictures, but there's severe pavement deterioration, and anyone in that area has, has seen the shape of the road. What's underneath the road? Well, we have a water main right now that, at the time of the project, will be 114 years old, as well as our sanitary sewer will be 114 years old. Storm sewer's a little younger, 93 years old, but obviously those are, have outlived their lifespan. We will be replacing the water main, the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer, and then replacing the laterals, which go to the properties up to about the sidewalk area. So we get new materials for the laterals out of the street. And then we will also have new lighting installed. The cost of the project, these are obviously estimated costs, but the total cost is around 2.3 million, with the majority of it for the pavement and the signals. The way this is funded is we have federal funding for about 60% of the project. Because of this, this project, like others we've had, will be run, it'll be bid out, and inspected by the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. We, as a city, will inspect our sanitary We, as a city, will inspect our sanitary sewer and our water main, but the DOT will be inspecting and, and running the majority of this project. As you can see with kind of these two slides, the federal funding is almost 1.4 million. Our special assessments come in at only 115,000, which is 5% of the estimated cost. The rest of the costs come from our utility funds and from our citywide property taxes. For special assessments, giving a very typical lot of 35 feet, our assessment rate is, this year, for a reconstruct, reconstruction is 60, about $67 a foot. So the average lot would cost the property owner 2,343, or $2,300. In addition, if they have driveway replacement, it is another $8.36 per square foot. The bills would be mailed out in March of '24, and there can be a five-year or a 10-year installment plan. With that plan, there is a 4% interest. That is just to cover the cost of the interest that the city has to pay. The city is not making money on charging interest to people. Special assessments, they have been in place for, for many, many years. Used to be assessing substantially more for a project, and the rate is, covers all property owners. I know property taxes are, are distributed a little bit differently, but for each property owner on this street, they will receive the same price per foot. Unless it is, of course, a business or corporation or manufacturer, they pay a higher assessment rate. So special assessments, I guess, leave no one, no one gets an exemption or a way, way out of them. The schedule, in fact, I believe today was the day the DOT received bids from contractors. This project will be awarded in February, and starting sometime in spring of '23, with, hoping to be finished sometime in September of '23. There will be a detour route, this is pretty hard to see, so I zoomed in a little bit. The detour will be 70th to Greenfield to 62nd Street. So the road will be closed right here, and our trucking route will be on these major streets. Obviously, there will be, regular passenger cars can find different routes, and as we have experienced in the past, we kind of deal with those as, as the problems occur with people cutting through residential streets. I, I always tell everyone to sign up to our Construction in Progress Report, which gives you a pretty good idea of what's happening on a weekly basis. And in conclusion, I'd be happy to field any, any questions on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Hutter. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Alderman Haas.
Thank you. And Rob, are there plans for bike lanes and bumpouts on this, or other traffic calming features?
Yeah, there will be bumpouts at the different intersections, 64th, 63rd, we will have bumpouts, and I believe there will be bike lanes striped in it as well.
Striped, how, what about green bike lanes, like on other portions of?
I, I think they're just striping that, not doing the green. The green seems to have faded and, and chipped a little bit, so I think it's just the striping, but I can verify that.
Thank you. And then a, a second question, you mentioned replacing the lighting. There's currently ornamental lighting there. Is the new lighting going to be the same type of ornamental lighting, something different?
I think we will be using, the, the bid would be to be using the poles that are there right now, the, the way the project is bid. If there is money to replace those poles, it's a possibility, otherwise we'd be using the same poles that are there now.
Okay, same poles, but new lamps, then?
Yes, yeah.
And then new wiring as well?
They'd have to redo the wiring with, with the different lights, or different, the LED.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Vitale?
Yeah, Rob, I mean, tonight really, with my whole heart, I'd like to say to you, your presentation was very, very professional, really. I mean, you explained every details, there was no up and downs on anything, what you addressed to us. I believe you did a hell of a good job for, for first time, you know, really, I do. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Weigel?
Thank you, Mayor Devine. Rob, quick question, you mentioned on the special assessments, and this is one way we get properties that don't pay property taxes and contribute to the operation of the city normally. I'm just looking here at EpiCos Churches on the corner there, but I'm assuming they're getting the, so they'll be paying a special assessment, but I'm assuming they're getting a longside discount?
Yes, yes.
Because when we special assess houses that are buildings that are on a, properties on a corner, we don't charge them full price for both streets, because eventually Greenfield Avenue will be reconstructed sometime in the future, and Greenfield Avenue's a little bit shorter, so they're getting a longside discount on the National Avenue project.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from the common council? Seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the members of the audience? If you can come up to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marla Pointinger. I am the owner of Barson Recreation, and I own 6325 West National, and we're going to be redeveloping the building for our new project there. And my question is just if there could be any coordination on the timing, because we're going to need to put in a sprinkler system for our building, and so we'll need to put the tie-in for our sprinkler riser, under the street anyway. And so we were thinking, if the street's going to be torn up, could we take that opportunity to do that hookup at the same time? And so I didn't know if there was the ability to work with you guys on the timing of that.
Yes, usually it's out in the field, working with our city inspector for the water main or the State Department of Transportation inspector.
Okay.
So yeah, just keeping the open lines of communication always helps.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, the last thing we want to do is rip up the road after.
Twice, yeah, exactly. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number three. Thank you, everybody, and we will now go on to citizen participation. The council may receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Each speaker must announce their name and address to the council, sign in, and limit their comments to no more than one statement of less than five minutes. We keep this section of our agenda to 30 minutes. Does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? I do not see anybody, so we will close citizen participation and go on to item F. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. The room numbers are listed on the top of page two of your agendas. Moving on to item G, the mayor's report. I don't really have a official report, but I just, because this is our last meeting of the year, and last meeting before the holidays, I just want to take a minute to thank all of the city staff and employees in every department from top to bottom for everything that they have done over the course of 2022. A lot of times, they are doing things that an average citizen or business owner doesn't even know gets done in the city until it's not there. And I also want to give a special nod to those that will be working on the holidays, being that the nights of Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, those that worked on Thanksgiving, those that get called in in the middle of the night, those that are dealing and helping with everybody coming into City Hall, whether they're purchasing a permit or having a concern that they want to talk to one of us about. We are incredibly thankful for everything that they have done over the course of this year. They do a completely wonderful job, and the work that they do makes all of our jobs easier, and we cannot thank them enough. So I just want to say that, and I also want to just wish everybody a very happy holiday season. That does conclude the mayor's report. Do we have any reports from the alderpersons? Seeing none.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the common council meeting minutes of November 15th, 2022.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
Unless there's any objections from the council member, I would refer you to item J, our consent agenda, and I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented, along, along with the supplemental agenda, item 31A, to be included in that.
Second.
Thank you. If there is no call for separate action, we have a motion and a second. All right. Seeing none, Ben Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Stefanski.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Frankie.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess.